Afternoon. Welcome to the work session of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners for Wednesday, February 19th. Today, we're getting an overview on the Heritage Conservation Council and Sustainability Departments. As with all of our work sessions, no action is taken. These meetings are for informational purposes only. However, we welcome any public comment on the items that are presented today. If you'd like to join us at our 5:30 business meeting during that time. With that, I'll turn it over to Kim or Sarah or who would. Caitlin, okay. I didn't know who's gonna go first, so. Hi Caitlin.
There. Already dropping pens. It's all good. Hi there, I'm Caitlin Amerlin. I'm the Heritage Conservation Coordinator for Douglas County. So I oversee all the natural and cultural heritage projects that the county takes on. And I think I'm gonna lead us off tonight and then will be followed by sustainability. But we work closely together on certain projects. And anyway, excited to be here. So I was just planning to kind of lead an informal conversation on some of the work that the county has done to support heritage conservation efforts. And yeah, feel free to jump in with any questions. I provided a bit of an overview in the agenda packet and linked to a whole bunch of stuff. So if you ever do want to go down a heritage rabbit hole, we've got several. And I think that's one of the cool things about my job and the work we do is it's very diverse and anyway, so I'll try to keep it concise and feel free to jump in. So the Heritage Department, Heritage Office, Heritage Conservation Council, we go by a lot of different names. So as far as staff wise, we just have one full-time staff, myself, who oversees this work. And that is also supported by the Heritage Conservation Council, which is a seven-member advisory board to the county government that was created in 2011. So that was really when the county's heritage efforts were formalized with the completion of the Natural and Cultural Heritage Task Force Report. So that kind of jump-started the county's direct investment in this type of work and kind of continued here today. So the council itself is a great group of folks. They have a diverse background in natural and cultural heritage. With three members, kind of the only firm structure we have is three members have to be preservation professionals. So they are in the field of historic preservation, historian, architect, archaeologists, things like that. But the rest of the folks just have to have an interest in conservation. We've had a fair bit of turnover recently. We have four members that have been added since I've been with the county. I started in 2023. And so, yeah, so a lot of fresh faces and kind of excited with the direction we're headed. So our work is kind of broken up into two, kind of like big time periods. So we have the task force report that kind of set forward that first 12 or so years of the council's efforts. And that was really centered in a lot of historic preservation, a lot of survey work, and really rooted in the grant program itself. And so that report really kind of set the strategic goals for a lot of the bulk of that work. And in 2022, we did an updated strategic plan that has kind of set forward where we are today. And that is really more in the lens of being a convener and supporter of this work, more from a strategic planning perspective, rather than sort of doing the physical work ourselves in terms of, you know, direct, big events and outreach. We're kind of focusing more on the larger picture, how we can serve for our partners already working in this space, leaning into the grant program and other supportive projects. So with that, any, any big questions off the jump? Okay, I'll keep, I'll keep rolling on ahead. But so kind of thinking of what information's available and what we have done so far. So I'll kind of start with the historic preservation work. So we have with the support of consultants who kind of carry out the surveys, but systematically done surveys of each township in Douglas County for the rural historic resources. So that work took a lot of time. It was funded mostly in part with Historic Preservation Fund grants through the state Historic Preservation Office. Those are federal funds that flow through the state to support this type of preservation work. So we know a lot about our historic properties here in Douglas County. That work was really completed and formalized and put all together with the Rural Historic Resources Guide. So if you want to look at a good summary of what kind of comes next from those surveys, that, that kind of culminated there in that guide. And that can be used then in future planning work where historic resources are concerned in moving into future planning. The other kind of strong bit, just mentioning, there's been a lot of public outreach type projects that were done during that period too. A couple of preservation conferences here in Douglas County that pulled folks in from, you know, across the state to learn more about preservation in Douglas County. And we have our natural landmark tour. They've done several, you know, education type events. I'm thinking of their cemetery conservation projects, lots of little things like that. So that's, that's kind of a lot of that historic preservation work that took up a lot of time and was quite successful. If you see the, the map of the state of Kansas's historic resources, you'll see a lot of pinpoints in Douglas County. And that was a lot of work and is, has been quite valuable for organizations and property owners interested in going down the preservation path. So when the council was created, as was the Natural and Cultural Heritage Grant Program, which has really been the bedrock of our work, the primary outcome of that Natural and Cultural Heritage Task Force Report was the recommendation to create a grant program. I, I feel like I could talk forever about the grant program, but it has supported over 100 projects in Douglas County and totaled to over $3 million worth of investment, direct investment in local heritage conservation projects. I think it's been quite successful in funding work that otherwise would have a very challenging time receiving funding. And this is, you know, I don't know, the Douglas County's investment in this work is seen and felt, whether you haven't seen it directly, chances are you've been to a place, been to an event, been touched by this grant funding, most folks in the county have. So lots of different types of projects. It's broad by nature. So anywhere from prairie restorations, riverbank restoration surveys, comprehensive surveys through the Kansas Biological Survey on the natural heritage side to museum investments. If you've been to the Adora Area Historical Society, their community museum, that would, that whole project was made possible by this grant program. You know, and paired with a lot of community support, but really been the, this grant program was the bedrock for that project. So a lot of those traditional, what you might think of as, you know, that museum collections, projects like that, but also a lot of living heritage type projects with, you know, events and celebrations and community outreach and engagement in what heritage looks like for different communities across the county. And then historic preservation projects. So also quite a few brick and mortar type preservation projects that are often very challenging to find funding for. So this is a local source that has supported some of that work. We created a map of all the projects. That's a wonderful source. If you want to learn more about the projects that were funded, we have a map online that has kind of the geographic distribution. And one of my primary goals moving through is just sharing the success of that program even more. You know, there's been so much great work done and, you know, I think, yeah, I think that's just something we continually improve moving forward is, is sharing that great work. Let's see, the grant program. So that is kind of, I've kind of viewed my work as sort of the, the grant programs, the baseline, a lot of, of a lot of that. That's the way we directly interact with a lot of organizations. We see a lot of benefits from the grant program itself. And yeah, getting to work with folks is really exciting. I feel like my brain is fully in grant program mode. The deadline for folks to meet with me for grants this year is on Friday. So I've been meeting with community groups almost non-stop for the last couple of weeks. And it's very uplifting. It's very great to get to hear what folks have in mind and kind of where they're headed. Anyway, it's very, it's such a joy and I'm really grateful that the county has a source of funding. I mean, I, I couldn't tell you the, you know, project ideas I've heard the last few weeks of, I don't think that another funding source would exist. A lot of these projects wouldn't exist, but not for these funds. So it's pretty unique in that sense. So that's kind of where we're headed with that. And yeah, you'll see those, hopefully those recommendations mid-April and very excited about that. So kind of new this year and kind of what we're working on right now, the grant program kind of continues, like I said, to be that bedrock of the work. But kind of leaning into that funding support, we've transitioned a bit of our professional services funding in the last budget cycle to directly support events and celebrations. So that'll be a new sort of program and pool of funds we have available this year. So we'll have that come together this year. And the county directly supports local museums and historical societies through the annual budget process. That's been something that's been going on, on at the county level for a while. A lot of those funding numbers have just kind of happened over time, as with a lot of community partner budgets. And so one of the goals we hope to accomplish this year and start on this year is a sort of needs assessment and strategic planning effort to kind of better work together with our historical societies and for, you know, us as the county to understand what our role is there and then for, you know, the, the groups themselves to know what their needs are and how, how we can best support them. So kind of having a bird's eye perspective on, on the whole landscape and then tailoring, you know, how can we make sure that the system is sustainable into the future? That's kind of, you know, with, with a lot of organizations that are almost entirely volunteer run, you know, there's a lot of questions about sustainability, especially in the, the heritage space of, of those types of volunteers that tend to work there. So they generally have a lot of concerns over just making sure that all the work they put in now is, is seen into the future for, you know, more folks to enjoy. But yeah, so that's, that's that main project. And we'll also be finally embarking on the archaeological survey. This is a project that's been in progress for our hot minute. And we'll be funding that survey through our reserve funds. That was approved by the county commission, I believe, in 2022. And so that's been in progress for a little bit, but we're almost ready to embark on the RFP. We've been doing some outreach to the tribal historic preservation offices. There's a lot of sensitivity around archaeological data, as there should be. So we're just taking that very seriously and making sure the right folks are informed about this upcoming project. And that's in a countywide survey. There was previously one done in 1996. This would be to update that, to give us again, a bird's eye perspective on potential needs. And it'll have a couple of focus areas, but that'll be determined after the, the results of the first part of the survey. And then I also have worked a lot on the open space projects that have been going on. Kim will dive into that a little bit more, but I specifically have been very involved with the Kansas Land Trust Partnership and the Douglas County Land Protection Program, as we're calling it. And so that's also in progress at the moment. Those applications are open until the end of February and I'm very hopeful that we'll have a couple of applications and get, get that project moving forward. And that's a project to support the cost of establishing conservation easements here in Douglas County for properties that serve a significant public benefit. So I'm really excited about that work as well. But yeah, Kim will talk more about open space in general, but that's kind of what I have on, on my plate this year. We still do a fair, a bit of public outreach. We had our barn fest event last fall and we'll continue to, you know, keep our work, keep the public informed of our work, but it'll be a bit of a smaller, you know, where there's, we have limited capacity as a staff of one and our council is very busy. So we're kind of balancing, you know, the doing work with this more supportive holistic work. But that's a bit of an overview. Yeah, I hope I didn't miss anything too big, but I'm looking to Kim as if she knows a whole lot. We work very closely together and anyway, part of just being a staff of one, I don't know if I've missed anything because I'm the one doing it. Anyway, I'll, I'll stop there and see if you have any questions. And yeah, I appreciate, I think, I guess I speak for the grantees and the folks I work with. I think the county's investment in this space is really important and really impactful, you know, you know, per, per dollar basis there, especially with the grant program. They're just, like I said, these projects and funds, or these projects wouldn't exist if not for these funds in most cases. So anyway, I'll stop there and yeah.
I just want to say, I love that so many of the, many of these pieces of work are linked in your document that you put in the packet. So it's just a lot of fun reading in there. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, there's, there's almost endless rabbit holes you can find yourself going down in this space. So yeah, caution, it will probably take a couple of hours just because it's, it's, there's a lot of fascinating history and there's a lot still to be told too, which is really exciting and yeah.
Caitlin, I really appreciate your work in this space. You mentioned impact and I'm going to say that I don't think every project we do needs to have a positive economic impact. Sometimes it's about preserving what we have. But have you done any type of analysis to, to look at the economic impacts? I mean, some of the grants do actually bring dollars to Douglas County. Have you done any of that or?
I have not done that directly, but I know that's a big kind of topic of conversation, specifically related to like the museums and, you know, the events that are held at these things. So we do know that there is a benefit that, like that draw is really important, but I don't know a lot of that personally. But I know that's something that we're kind of venturing into in terms of thinking of, of the World Cup, the 250th anniversary. There's a lot of sort of attention kind of around there. That would be a great launching point to start to better understand that a little bit more.
Thanks. And my second question is a little bit, can you, we, you have retooled the council a little bit and the roles on the council. Can you talk about how that's going?
Yeah, it seems to be going pretty all right. So we, part of the strategic planning, they kind of reformed the committees. There used to be a survey and communications committee and we've kind of reformed into a cultural and natural committee, so kind of splitting up the expertise a little bit more. I think the council is excited to dive deeper into, you know, the bylaws again and kind of continue to find that sort of direct purpose. I think that there's still more work that needs to be done there, just with more turnover on the council too. I think it's a great spot to look back at the strategic plan and kind of plan more into the future. We also had draft transition when that strategic plan was adopted too. So now that I've got my toes under me too, we can dive deeper and I think I see some changes to the bylaws coming in the future of just clearly defining what the goals are and what the roles of the committee. But overall seems to be pretty, pretty good, but we will always have more work to do to continue to make sure we're impactful as possible. And also meeting, you know, the council members or volunteers and making sure that their goals, you know, and what they hope to see, if they have a specific passion, making sure I can also support them in, in that as well, so.
I was just gonna add on to the question from Commissioner Kelly about the economic impact and whether or not it's possible to sort of measure any of that. I have been wondering a lot about whether or not the heritage program in particular, but also just all the individual sort of museums that are, are community partners of ours and also work directly with this program, whether or not there's much work with or communication with Explore Lawrence specifically, which has Lawrence in the title, but is pretty Douglas County, you know, broadly focused on tourism. And I think they, they have done a lot of different data analytics about different parts of sort of economic impact. And it's all, it all draws back to tourism and visitors. And so it would be interesting to see if there was some opportunity to leverage their team and whatever tools they use to think about, how do we tell the story about what that impact is? And I appreciate, you know, you think, you bringing up the, the World Cup and just that that's a conversation thread and a lot of different conversations right now, but thinking about that huge tourism that is coming our way and what are all of the different features and assets that we have here to contribute to that? And I think that so many of the things that are on the maps that you've pointed out and that, the museums and different groups do are a huge part of that. So I would love to see some emphasis on how do we highlight that in, both in that instance and then maybe it gives us some infrastructure for really tracking what that impact might look like in the future.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, the, using, using this big event as a way to build the infrastructure to continue that in the future. I'm really hopeful that all this collaboration around those couple of events will kind of continue those partnerships into the future. Cause I haven't worked a whole lot with historic, or with Explore Lawrence yet, but hopefully through, you know, these bigger projects, we can make those connections and continue to, yeah, just work together and strengthen the landscape in the future.
I would agree. And when I was going down the rabbit hole myself and just reading more into the map, it made me think about the Cal Valley Farm Tour in the brochure. And so as we do think about the World Cup, if there could be something, doesn't have to be similar, but yeah, so like even just something simple like that, you know, with a QR code where people could, you know, just go out and tour, right? All the various projects that your team has or you, right? That the whole, the council has supported over the years. I think that would just be an amazing opportunity for, as an economic driver.
Yeah, no, that's a fantastic idea. And yeah, I, I feel like I can't take enough ideas of how to, you know, celebrate the success of that program. I, I know in the past, specifically related to the farm tour, the council HCC has, there has been a heritage site component of the farm tour. I don't know exactly what years that was. I think it was relatively recently, but that is something that has been done before. It took a lot of staff and HCC time, so we kind of stepped back from that a little bit, but there could definitely be ways. I love the idea of, of just online maps and those tours that they've done through Freedom's Frontier National Heritage, National Heritage Area. So that's, that's a great idea. Wonderful. Okay, well, I'm not going anywhere, but Kim?
I was just gonna say that we could progress into talking about the sustainability division. And then as Caitlin already mentioned, our work does overlap and we could have more time to just discuss as a group at the end, if that sounds good. Great. We do have, or rather sustainability does have a couple slides for you. Okay. My name is Kim Criner Ritchie and I serve as the Sustainability Manager for the county. And I'm able, I have the privilege of leading this great team. I'm gonna go ahead and introduce our staff and then you'll get a chance to hear from each one of them about what they're working on. We have some examples for you. So we have Jamie Hoffling, who's our Sustainability Impact Analyst, Connie Fitzpatrick, our Food Systems Specialist, and Star Hermini Horses are working with us as Food System Intern at the moment. When we talk about sustainability at the local community level, we are generally talking about the interdependence between natural resources that we rely on and ecosystem surfaces that keep us healthy and safe, economic opportunity that supports prospering households and may promote community solutions, as well as a just community that provides access to resources and opportunity so that everyone can thrive. So our function for the county is to make recommendations and form partnerships that can help advance that balance through the services, functions, and strategic planning for the county. So our work is guided by three broad, community-driven and visionary plans. In your packet, we provided kind of a rough and quick supplemental document that provided links to these plans where you can read further about their development. But each one came out of comprehensive planning for the county. And it either included by reference or will be added as addendum. Some have been very recently adopted. So they will all be incorporated into Plan 2040 very soon. Let's see. Because our work can sound like a lot of big abstract ideas sometimes, we have lined up some brief examples in each of these areas, just to illustrate for you how the strategies in these plans can translate into real action and take form. And the supplemental document, we're gonna try, we're gonna try to go quick, so we have more time for discussion. So that supplemental document will have a little bit of backup details and background for that. And before I turn it over to Connie to kick off with food systems, I want to just, just make a mention that we've got some really colorful, kind of busy slides for you here. And one thing that you'll probably notice is a lot of logos and we're not going to talk to you about each one of them, but they are there to just demonstrate the great amount of partnership building and cross-agency collaboration that we participate in, in order to advance the work of these community plans. All right, Connie?
Okay. I'm going to read my notes just to make sure I don't go over time or go into a tangent. Hello, my name is Connie Fiorella Fitzpatrick and I serve as the Staff liaison for the Douglas County Food Policy Council, which is a joint advisory board for Douglas County and the City of Florence. The council's purpose is to advise our elected officials on food system-related policy issues and to provide a community forum for local food system development. Our work is guided by the Douglas County Food System Plan, which outlines five overarching goals, which specify objectives and recommendations. And you can find that on our website. Our local food system encompasses on how we produce, how we purchase, consume and dispose of food in Douglas County. It is shaped by ecosystems, education, culture, funding, research, and most importantly, public policies. The council recognizes a strong food system requires intentional collaborations, like Kim mentioned, community engagement and policy development that reflects local needs and Next slide, please. One of the ways that the Food Policy Council approaches this work is through the Forward Cities E3 Initiative, which focuses on advancing equitable food systems policy in the entrepreneurship realm. This community-driven approach follows a bottom-up strategy. So as you see on the chart, this is just to show you how, how we, the food council works. So you see on the chart, it starts at the bottom on the upside down pyramid to first listen to the community, build relationships and develop policies through collaborations with those directly affected, working closely with the city and county staff to implement meaningful changes. Most recently, an example of this approach is our, the food council's work on mobile food vendors. They created a study that, it started with vendors approaching the council with concerns about operating hours. The council conducted a study, collaborated with the City of Florence to revise some ordinances. Additionally, recognized that policy change along are not enough. Supporting food entrepreneurs with programming is equally important. And that is why the Food Policy Council backed this initiative with the Online Restaurant Academy, which provided new food businesses establishment a space to grow through education. So you will see that it starts first with community engagement, some studies, policy, and ideally some programming, but the Food Policy Council doesn't continue programming. They can start it and then pass it on to those, to partners to continue that work. Next slide. So beyond our local efforts, the council also engages in a state level. We are, the council is active, is an active participant in the Kansas Food Action Network, or KAFEN, which brings together food and farm councils across the state of Kansas to collaborate on statewide food policy. In fact, Kansas happens to have the highest number of food and farm councils per capita in the country. Earlier this month, on the 11th, the council traveled to Topeka to participate in the Kansas Food Action Network Advocacy Day, where they engaged with their elected officials and shared about the work that the food council works on our local food system. Next slide. So the, you will see our membership, our current membership. There are three open seats right now. And the food council's working groups are organized around five goals of the Food System Plan and also county initiatives. Looking ahead, the Douglas County Food System Plan is approaching its 10-year mark. It was adopted almost 10 years ago. As we are considering its future. As we are considering its future with your guidance, the council is identifying areas where to further research and start community engagement in those areas needed, of course, with guidance of this board. And next slide. One of those is the Indigenous Food Systems Study and Action Plan, which part of this board has heard about before in previous meetings. We, this initiative just started. So the hope is to understand what is our local indigenous food system. And we'll be back to share more about it. With that, I'm going to pass it to Star Hermine Horses.
Just hold it. Hi, I'm Atakiapi, Chanté Wasté Napé Chiuzapi. We chak pita shunko tamiyamachiapi. Hello, everyone. I greet you with a good heart and a handshake. My name is Star Hermine Horses and I come from the Ogallala Cota, Cheyenne, Tuskegee, Musquewaki, and Ojibwe Nations. And I am the current intern with the Douglas County Sustainability Office. I initially gained this internship through Haskell with the Sustainability Office being the host office. And following the completion of my internship in the summer of 2024, I was fortunate enough to continue my work as the Food Systems Intern for the county. And part of my work is to support the Food Policy Council and the shaping and development of the Indigenous Food Systems Study and Action Plan. And part of this work is to conduct more research on indigenous food systems. And the plan is currently still in its development stage, so there will be more updates to come. And I will also be presenting on my research to the Food Policy Council at the next meeting on Monday, the 24th. And I will hand it over to Jamie.
Hello, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jamie Hoffling, Sustainability Impact Analyst for Douglas County. And I lead the implementation of Adapt Douglas County, our Climate Action Adaptation Plan. Not sure if you all got your copy yet. Make it a copy. Okay, great. So that plan, as you may have seen already, Adapt Douglas County, it serves as our community-wide guide to address climate change impacts and help mitigate its, its causes. And throughout the development of this plan, we examined research on how our community is already experiencing climate change and also what we're, what's projected for our future, the future impacts. We conducted several layers of different types of community engagement all across the county. And all of that's documented in the Plan's appendix, if you'd like to look through that. To understand Douglas County's contributions to climate change, we conducted an emissions inventory and found that our primary sources, no surprise, are the transportation sector and our built environment. The Plan's goals and strategies are designed to be inclusive with equity at the forefront, ensuring that our path toward climate resilience benefits all residents. So next, I'll touch on some of the different ways that we're starting to implement the plan. So next slide. And you'll notice that these next couple of slides, there's, there are boxes that are in color up there with icons and those are just to indicate the strategies that they associate with. And the icons are from the, the goal area that they, they are from. So internally, we have work to do to reduce our own energy consumption. So we're starting to embark on that by looking at our own county-owned facilities. We started to, we found lots of opportunities in several buildings at extension, at the fairgrounds, to upgrade the LED lighting and also at public works. Those, once those are implemented, those will save us about $15,000 annually. And those lights are expected to last for 15 years. So they're a lot, they have a long, a long lifespan. We also had the opportunity to incorporate solar panels into new county facilities, you may have heard, helping to offset more than a third of what we're anticipating for those buildings to consume on energy. So a third of that will be offset with those solar panels. And details of those two projects are in your handout. If you want to find out more about that or ask questions, happy to answer those. And then to support those efforts, we are going to be using financial incentives to help pay for those as well. So happy to talk about those as well, but just, just to kind of mention that now. And then for the broader community, we're creating an online energy hub where Douglas County residents, businesses, and nonprofits can learn and easily find access, easily access information about financial incentives that will help them reduce their own energy consumption and thereby save money. So that's something that will be coming out very soon. Been working very closely with IT on that. We're expecting a launch pretty, pretty soon. And so, next slide. Oh, and sorry, if you go back one, Kim, sorry. I didn't mention that the, 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 over there on the side of this, on the slide, you can see kind of an example of what that hub will look like. Okay, next slide. So the cost of energy is rising. Again, no big surprise. It places a growing strain on households and businesses. Many families in Douglas County face a high energy burden, meaning that they spend a disproportionately large amount of their income on energy costs like electricity and heating. This financial strain often forces difficult trade-offs, where families must prioritize utility bills over essential needs like food, healthcare, transportation. Lower-income households are impacted the most by that. And in response, we collaborated with local housing partners to develop a concept aimed at reducing energy costs in income-eligible households. And we've submitted that idea, that concept for grant funding and we're currently waiting to hear back whether or not we'll be rewarded for that. So stay tuned for an update on that later. Next slide. Electric vehicle adoption is increasing in Douglas County. Our NPO has some research on that that we've been looking into. And this trend is expected to continue in, throughout the, throughout the nation, not just Douglas County. Electric vehicles produce zero tailpipe emissions, helping to reduce transportation sector emissions, which, as I mentioned earlier, is the one of the counties or is the county's largest emission source. To support this transition, we're working with the Metropolitan Planning Organization, NPO, and cities around, all across Douglas County to access public charging infrastructure needs and ensure adequate access to electric vehicle charging. So these strategies that I've shared are focused primarily on mitigating emissions. But Adapt Douglas County also prioritizes adaptation, which in effect protects public health and prepares our community for climate-related impacts. And Kim is going to share progress on some of the adaptation efforts that are related to land, land use, next.
Thank you. So as Jamie was, was mentioning, so land use and appreciation and protection of ecosystem services play a very large role in climate adaptation, which makes the Open Space Plan a really strong complement to Adapt Douglas County. Several of the land conservation priorities within the Open Space Plan have the co-benefit of supporting our climate resilience. So to, just to start talking about open space briefly, I want to point out that in your packet was another supplementary document that breaks down several elements of our very young open space program. But I want to point out this, the range of departments and divisions that make up our open space efforts. Thus far, by sharing the capacity and collaborating across this diverse group of functions and expertise, we've been able to, to make progress on all three of the focus areas that are outlined in the Open Space Plan. So Caitlin mentioned the land protection program. That was, sorry. So that's one area. It was to support the conservation of private land that holds a significant public benefit. Another focus area was raising awareness and appreciation and access of our current county open spaces. And that, that effort has been launched first through improvements to facilities and accessibility at Lone Star Lake in the form of new picnic shelters, replacing swimming docks, fishing docks, repairing amenities at campgrounds, as well as the addition of historical interpretive signage as well. And then the third is strategic conservation of the Waukerosa River Valley. And the purpose of this, of this slide. So while the Open Space Plan was a broad process to identify community values and opportunities for the county to lead in open space, the Waukerosa River Valley area, what did we call, what are we calling it? Waukerosa River Valley Vision and Area Plan. We need to come up with some kind of acronym for that. But that is going to be a more technical and targeted document that can be used as a planning tool. It's going to lean heavily into spatial analysis, mapping a variety of land characteristics and, or, yeah, land characteristics, sorry, as well as cultural and human needs, such as infrastructure or cultural significance. Ultimately, our, our goal is to be able to proactively plan for the balance between natural resource protection, conservation of land, and balance that with the development needs of our growing community. So we're just launching this effort. In fact, last week, we convened an initial group of, of planning team, we're calling them. And our next step will be to develop an engagement plan so that we can make sure we're being transparent and inclusive of those who will be most impacted or who are invested in the future of that area. And we look forward to sharing milestones with you on this project. And before I just wrap it up for, to, to discuss with you, one thing I didn't mention, which is what a lot of people think of when they hear sustainability is recycling. So another thing that we will be doing is updating our Waste Management Plan for the county. That is a KDHE requirement. And we have done the, the required five-year updates, but we have not comprehensively looked at this plan since 1996. And so that is something that we'll be doing and our office will be playing a hand in that. Thank you.
When you mentioned updating the Waste Management Plan, can you talk a little bit more about that? Do you have any? Yeah, do you know what you mean by that?
So we are still waiting for a proposal back from Burns and McDonald to assist us with that. We will be looking to, first, let me say that the City of Lawrence is also creating or updating, or both, a master waste management plan for their own operations and their own municipality. And we will be looking to a lot of, and Burns and McDonald is helping them with that. And we will be looking to a lot of the data that they are finding from what is, what is, they're going to do a waste characterization study. The, actually, in fact, the state of Kansas did a waste characterization study and they used the HAM landfill as one of the state of Kansas examples. So we'll have some really localized data of what is making up our waste stream.
Kim, I can maybe chime in a little bit. So according to the regulations, counties are responsible for putting the plan together. But in Douglas County, we don't do any solid waste hauling or management. So really, we're the coordinator of that function. And so we work with entities that do solid waste hauling and that work. So that's why our partnership with the City of Lawrence is so important in this endeavor. We have been advised by KDHE, it's time to get a really well-developed plan. And Lawrence is going to help us partner on that. We'll be working with private haulers and basically studying all that information. But really, we're working as a coordinator to put all that information together and submit it to the state on behalf of the cities.
Okay. With the mention of recycling, I was curious if there was going to be conversations with the other cities across the county, simply because of recent conversations with the other cities and their desire to have recycling, more recycling services brought to them.
Yeah, and I, you know, obviously, we will be talking about that. The hard part here is that, you know, it's an expensive service. It's not easy to, it's just not, it's, it's an expensive service. So most cities do it through some sort of utility, you know, or they have a private hauler and the hauler charges. So I think we want to see expanded recycling. It's just how do we continue to make it affordable for everyone?
Do you know if KDHE has given a similar directive to any of the municipalities? Like you mentioned that City of Lawrence currently has a, a study or analysis of their own going on, correct, Kim? Did I hear that right?
Yes, but I believe that that's
Just sort of like a voluntary?
An effort that they, that Lawrence independently feels is important. I believe it's only the county that KDHE, counties that KDHE is really honing in on.
I got you. Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I think it would be interesting as part of the process to, to know what the other cities' waste management plans are, if for no other reason than to be able to inventory them as a part of this process and know where there is continuity and where there's not, just for the sake of knowing.
And I believe that the county plan does need to require, I'm sorry, include how the cities are, how the municipalities are, are managing, what, what services they offer, just if nothing else, then to catalog it. But it would, my hope is that, yes, we're looking at coordination and we're looking at best practice and we're coordinating it. But maybe we're also looking to the, the future of waste management.
I'll just add a little bit to that, too, that, to answer your question, yes, that, that is part of, a big part of the conversation moving forward is how do we balance the needs of each one of our, of our cities and the unincorporated area with how we're handling solid waste. The City of Lawrence is updating their operational plan, which is a little bit more specific to them because they are hauling solid waste themselves. But we also recognize that they're a big footprint within our solid waste discussion. So that's a little bit of why the timing is the way that it is. But moving forward, we, as Sarah mentioned, we are required to do these, these updates on a, on a fairly frequent basis. And having one updated in '96, it's time to, to really dive into that, which has been a big point with KDHE is how we're reporting back. But I do want to also clarify that we, we do do this in tandem with Jefferson County as well. So there is another partner here that we need to engage with because that has been historically how we've operated that, that plan, so.
This is just a quick curiosity and, because I vaguely remember from, I think, my first year as a commissioner. Sarah, do you know, like, how many years in are we on the, on the landfill that we? You mentioned Jefferson County, so that, which was a question that was bubbling in my head, was do we do this in conjunction with them because we both run or use the landfill together? And then it's sort of an arbitrary question, but I just remember that it's like a 99-year lifespan of the landfill and I couldn't remember about how far into that we are, but.
I, I don't know exactly where we're at in that. I think this study will help, I mean, the updated plan will tell us that. But no, KDHE just puts county, put counties together historically this way. You can break up and do it on your own if you want to. That's not something, particularly in our situation, because, you know, we work, they have the landfill and I, I think it benefits us to sort of have them included in that conversation. But no, it's kind of KDHE just sort of puts you together. What I understand, or it's, you know, because it's always been that way.
Right. I think it, yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot of that is, I think it's just the way that we've always done it. But you are seeing, I mean, solid waste is a regional concept when you start to consider ultimately where that waste stream is going to. So that is, that is why you, you see some of this partnering going on and specifically with Douglas County. That's why we're, we're really, back to your, to your question, why we want to hear from the cities, because the cities also have, you know, a different, you know, depending on the utilities, as Sarah mentioned, it may be a municipal service or it may be a private contractor coming in or nobody at all. But those ordinances will vary depending on the jurisdiction.
I had three questions. First one, I think, is for Jamie. Do you have any kind of inventory of how many electric vehicles there are in Douglas County?
Yes, it's a good question. I don't know it off the top of my head, but that research has been done. We had to submit to the state to get that information, even though we register them here in the county. Those records are held at the state office in Topeka, so I can get that information for you.
I don't recall if it was Kansas or another state is thinking about implementing a road road tax on recharging stations. And I don't remember, you might know if it's Kansas or not, because what they've discovered is electric vehicles are using the roads, but they're not paying any road tax.
Yeah, that is being considered. I do know in registration, when a person drives a hybrid or an electric vehicle, they are charged extra at the time of registration.
Oh, okay.
So they, it's $100, $150 for electric vehicles and $100 for hybrids. So to try to make up some of that tax that would otherwise be paid for with fuel.
I don't know how you tax somebody if they recharged at home, but maybe the little stations at Hy-Vee could add something on or something.
Yeah, yeah, that is something that's being looked at, though, and yeah.
Yeah, the real challenge is just the historical way that we've paid for road improvements is based off gas. And we really just need to reinvent a whole new way to invest in that infrastructure. So I don't think Kansas has that at this time, but they've toyed with it at different times.
Question number two, and I'm not sure who to direct this to, but if you had any interface with the winery industry in Douglas County, they're getting ready to get an approval for a designation of Cal Valley vintage type wines that would be like, you know, California wine. It would be a brand, if you will, that could be used.
We had a few council members who grow grapes and, but, yeah. The council also participates in the Cal Valley Farm Tour. Not directly at this time, they are, they're not directly working on policies or supporting anything. But they also welcome farmers to come to our meetings to support advancements of those opportunities. So I'm sure I can look into that and bring it up.
I was just thinking for the World Cup, winery tours might be a drawing card for the county.
Yes.
Third question. I seem to recall a presentation about a year and a half ago on a feasibility study for a multi-species slaughtering house. And as I recall, it would probably be a small type thing that maybe four-hangers or something like that would use. And I was just wondering if there's any follow-up on that feasibility study.
That was an ARPA project. That was an ARPA project that was being considered. So I don't know if you guys have more on that or not.
I just don't know that it wasn't, it wasn't born out of the Food Policy Council. I think maybe Food Policy Council received a presentation similar to what you're remembering we would have received, Jean. And I think the short answer to that is nothing much else has happened since the sort of conclusion of that feasibility study. I don't know if you guys have other intel, but I know it hasn't been directly.
I was just thinking that would fit into food sustainability because when you run out of gas and trucks aren't going to be driving everywhere, you might want a local facility.
Yes, I know that that's certainly still in need. But I know, maybe, Kim, you have something else to share. I don't know too much about what happened with the ARPA funds and that specific project.
Well, I believe the ARPA funds is what funded the feasibility study. And the farmer, Shepard, who was spearheading some of the feasibility study, did present to the Food Policy Council. And I believe the Food Policy Council had written a number of letters of support for further capital funding or progress in that. So there it has been some connection. Don't know more about where it is right now, but that's certainly a relationship that's been made.
Yes, just to clarify, what I meant is that I have not seen the report. I am not sure if it has been published.
I have one question. And I know I'm not trying to ask for spoiler alerts because I heard you say, Star and you, Connie, that there'll be more information forthcoming about the Indigenous Food Systems Plan. And duly noted that you're presenting some of it on Monday, so maybe I'll try and come listen to that if I can. I'm just curious if, beyond sort of individuals and entities in Douglas County, if the group so far in discussions and in your research has been in communication with any of the tribes in northeast Kansas and or any other organizations or entities that are regional and not necessarily within Douglas County, but might have connection to to our community? Just curious if that's been a part of the process so far.
I'll pass it to Star in a minute, but I just wanted to share from the research perspective. We have hired folks of Indigenous backgrounds who are experts, farmers, or have done policy work or have done national-scale Indigenous food systems policy work. So they are bringing their expertise and connections to our local sovereign nations. And I would also add that we're working with, a partner is Haskell Indians University Extension Office. I think it's often forgotten that there are two extension offices in Douglas County. So that's a very strong partner of this initiative. And we have worked with natives, which is a national organization that supports Indigenous food waste, largely in retail and through cooking demonstrations. And we are in a very unique position as it is important to collaborate with regional Indigenous sovereign nations, but also acknowledge that there are like over 145 languages spoken, which means also cultures and a significant amount of tribes. For that reason, I'm going, Star has been building relationships, so I'll pass the mic to her.
Sorry. Yeah, so like, I would say that, as I'm going to present on Monday about this work, too, one of my goals, like, within my research as the intern, is to develop these collaborations and relationships with not only the Native nations that are in Kansas, but also those that are within the region. So some of the work that I have done already is I have visited with one of my nations in the region, which is the Musquevake Nation in Tama, Iowa. And I have kind of just touched base with their food sovereignty program and how they serve their community, have visited their farm there that's called Red Earth Gardens. And it's a big operation that is looking to expand and potentially be a partnership in something if we were to further the Indigenous Food System Action Plan here in Douglas County, such as potentially maybe a food, Indigenous pilot, food grocer, and just sourcing different products from these Indigenous nations, these Indigenous entrepreneurs, farmers. So a part of my work is just starting to create those connections and seeking interest from these groups. And so, yeah, but the next part of my plan, though, is to get in touch with the nations in Kansas itself and really develop those relationships.
Thank you. I appreciate that preview. And I appreciate your point, too, Connie, and that it is absolutely true that so many tribes and cultures are represented in this community. It's what's really unique about this community with Haskell being here. So I certainly want to be and expect that this process is being expansive and that thinking. Part of what has me thinking about the really, the tribal lands and the activities within state boundaries is really just my, mostly my familiarity with Iowa tribe and the incredible stuff that they have been doing related to all kinds of their food systems. So that's really, I guess, the precipice for the question. And just thinking about, it's exciting to hear that, like, some ideas around that are a market here for those products in a community where there is a market for those products in terms of consumers, but maybe not a good way to facilitate some of those products and that might come from Iowa tribe or elsewhere. So anyway, thanks for that preview. I'm excited to hear more.
I had one quick question. Well, maybe it's not quick, but what happens next on the Walkerosa River issue?
So we are awaiting some analysis and notes from the consultants that we're working with. It's a multi-firm team led by ecological consultant called Biohabitats. We just on Friday had our kickoff meeting, so we're waiting for some cues on them. But I know that one of those initial steps is going to be creating an engagement plan. So to make sure that we're making space and room, intentional room, to speak with a number of stakeholder groups who are going to be concerned or interested in this, including landowners in the area, the development community, different institutions like Haskell Indian Nations University, who is also at our planning meeting on Friday, our neighboring cities, city of Lawrence, city of Udora, who is also at our meeting on Friday. And I'm forgetting, oh, and conservation agencies and groups, that'll be another very important audience. And then, of course, how we, what are the stages in which we reach the general public and share with them some of the visioning and planning that has been happening?
Jamie, you mentioned financial incentives. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, yeah. So there are quite a few of different kinds of financial incentives. And the ones I was speaking about were about energy efficiency through our utility company, Evergy, here, at Lysin Lawrence and La Compton. Those financial incentives are available for small businesses, commercial businesses, and to residences. They are new. They just came out in '24. They've been in Missouri for a long time and Kansas just adopted, just started to allow those here. So those are, those are very, very new. They deserve promotion and it's what we're putting them up on the Energy Hub website for. And then another one I was mentioning was called elective pay. So for a long time now, there has been a tax credit available to both residences and businesses to, if they want to purchase solar energy, or, sorry, if they want to purchase solar panels to produce their own energy, they can get 30% tax credit back. And now there is a way to do that for non-taxpaying entities to receive a 30% rebate. That's the one that the county and churches and nonprofits across the county can access. And there are several more, but that's just kind of a snapshot of some of them. You know what, actually, I'm sorry, I should mention one more that is coming down the pike because it's pretty exciting. Kansas did receive funding from the Department of Energy, all the states did. And Kansas is rolling theirs out this year. And those will be for everyone, energy efficiency, weatherization, and renewable energy.
Just one quick note, I don't know that it's a question per se, but when putting together that Energy Hub, which I love the idea of, and really being a promoter of that information, now I'm going to go read more about it later to make sure I understand it, but I'm going to assume that it's generally targeted. I mean, it's for property owners. And so I'm curious what, if anything, those incentives say about tenants and renters and what requirements or eligibility criteria might be relevant to renters and anything they might have to do to talk to their property owners. Like, I'd be interested to understand that more. So when you guys are convening or sort of coalescing that information, I'd be interested to know more about that and make sure that that's clear in our information sharing.
Coming on the end of our time, I have one question, I think, for Connie, and it may be adjacent to your work, so feel free to defer. But I really enjoyed the Forward Cities E3 discussion. That was about a year ago, maybe a little longer than that. And I'm interested, you know, so much of that was related to food in Douglas County. And are you, as you've continued to do that work in that space, have you run into barriers or do you have success stories to tell us about? I know that's one of the big goals of the Food Policy Council.
Yes, so thankfully, we do have an economic development working group with the Food Policy Council, so they have been able to dive into that work. And it has been really helpful to have that framework to work with to allow us to build work. I think without the framework, we wouldn't have necessarily a backup or the language to do the work that's needed. But some of the barriers that we have encountered that I have found that recently, actually, so language barrier was one of them. If you look at our website on their economic development, you will find the report on E3. And one of the requests was for entrepreneurship support organizations to have more bilingual folks, bilingual staff. And thankfully, K-State Extension has recently hired, actually, one of our Food Policy Council members, Quinlan Catr, who speaks Spanish. And through her role as an entrepreneur entrepreneurship service, she has a really long title. In short, her work is to support entrepreneurs through the Heartland Regional Food Business Center and the Business Builder Grants. This is food and farm, food trucks, anything within the food system. But she also speaks Spanish, so we have been able to team up. And it's not just, I am also bilingual in Spanish, English. I speak other languages. But most of my work here in Douglas County, I use the Spanish language. So it has not just been on my shoulders to do that work. And I have been able to share that with Quinlan to support with technical assistance for Spanish, for grocers, food trucks, et cetera. So that has been really nice, but we're hoping that other organizations take that initiative to hire bilingual folks. And that's needed across the board, not just with organizations like nonprofits or government, but also in the whole ecosystem, like banks and networking centers, et cetera.
Thanks for that update. Any other questions, commissioners? Well, thank you all for being here and for this great update. And if we have other questions, I'm sure we'll reach out to you. And everybody will be at Star Many Horses presentation. I'm just kidding. No pressure on you, but good luck with that. And with that, we'll break until our 5:30 business meeting.